Yes, I'll have to call her.
Are we okay to go, Suzanne? We're just gonna do accessory stuff anyway.
Is she gonna sign on? I gotta call her.
Uh, I don't think it's necessary. I'm gonna, we wanna, I don't think so.
Okay.
But why don't we just have her on call?
Yeah, 'cause I've been trying to do this. Because it, she's never can figure it out.
I think we went over the clip.
Here we go. I'll call her.
Well, you can just have her on call.
Yeah.
So if you want to get your abatement sheets out, they're in the packet there somewhere.
Hey.
Okay, so we've got the five abatements. You didn't hear any other information, did you? From anyone? Jackie?
No, I, I'm, I, I actually talked to two different people and they both had conflicting suggestions. So I'm waiting for MMA to call me and they'll probably call me tomorrow, so.
Okay. Do you have the original? Because I have two sets.
Yeah.
Okay. So, um, you'll see that there's five, uh, abatements. Two of them say process on them. And three of them say hold for funds. So after we pay the first two, or how do we approve them? We will have, um, taxed, we will have come to the limit of what we can abate. There was some confusion when the, uh, taxes were done where we should have had more money to abate. So now we're having to find out how we get more funds. Do we go to, we can't just go and take the money from surplus without at least finding the proper process to get.
I, I have to, yeah, I have to check to see whether we can do that or not.
Um, so I-
Who are the ones, who are the ones that you, that you, which is okay?
We, we took, Ruby and I went over them today and took the ones that would add up to the twelve hundred we had left, pretty much. So we put, um, account one-one-two-six, map and lot zero-fifteen-three-eighteen. And map and lot zero-fourty, uh, fifteen, account eighteen-eighty. So those two, we're gonna go through. But we can make a motion for the ones to be processed and also held for funds. So that they, uh, deserve, apparently they should have the abatement that we, we, it's subject to finding the funds, the proper way to find the funds.
Did you, did you, uh, abate Olson because we supplemented a different Olson and abated one Olson? Did you, did you, uh, cross-reference those and do, and involve the records?
We only, we only have, we, I only have five in front of me and we have Massimic, uh, Portolupi, an Olson, or Duran, and Albany. And we don't have two Olsons, so I'm, they weren't in my group that was given to me.
Alright.
Well, we should, we should have Ruby follow up on those other ones, anyway, and check it all out.
Yes, Ruby has, uh, didn't get these, all of them, in time to check everything out first. So we don't have the money anyway until we pay, find the funds.
So Ruby's good with these two?
Ruby's good with the five we have here. It's just in order to process them the first two. That's all the money we have, yes. So if you want to, we can just make a motion to do the two processed that we did.
I will, I can do it.
All in favor? Okay, uh-
Carol, where's the supplemental of the abatements?
The supplemental, Jackie, it's like something like thirty-five hundred, correct? Thirty-five thousand, right? Oh, or today's?
Yeah, but what's that?
Eight-six, eight-six and two-oh-seven.
A little less than, a little less than twelve hundred.
Two-oh-seven and eight-sixty-six, or is that, yeah? Uh, thirteen carry on seven, one thousand seventeen or something like that.
Okay.
One thousand dollars, seven, one thousand seventeen dollars.
Well, we don't have any supplements in front of us that I, that I know. I didn't see them. So let me look at that. So we're, we're still on the abatements. So, uh, do you want us, I think we're gonna hold off on voting for the ones where we, where we don't know where the funds are coming from yet? Hold for funds. I mean, you can go ahead and, and calculate what the abatement should be, but until the town can find the correct way to, to reach the funds, 'cause I believe, what was asked, Suzanne, that we would have had more abatement money, but something-
Yeah, there, in the beginning, yeah.
There was a error in, in the commitment.
So do we need a motion to hold these last ones?
I think we just leave, yeah, we'll just, so we, so we're gonna sign the process one.
John, it's one thousand seventy-four and five.
Sorry?
One thousand dollars, one thousand seventy-four dollars, right?
Today.
Yeah.
And two abatements. And then the procedure's now where, we'll put that over here, yeah, where we, um, where, where these are not sent out to the people till Ruby's checked them. And then the select board has voted to process them. And then we send them out to them with our signature. That's a little bit different than what we've been doing, right, Jackie?
Excuse me, uh-
Well, we're just gonna do, the process is gonna be that you, you calculate the abatement, they go to Ruby to double-check everything, then they come to us and then we approve of the abatement. And then, and then the copy of the abatement with the signed select board members on it sends, is sent to the people.
Correct, yep.
Okay, well, thank you for all your work. Now, what's going on with the supplements? I didn't see those today. I'm looking at them now, though.
There's two, there's two supplements for, uh, a piece of property that we have, uh, one for twenty-one and twenty-two, I think, and one for twenty-one. That was taxed unknown and we already abated them and now we've got a supplement back to who we think is the owner. Which was somebody that Ruby and Penny researched and, uh, uh, came up with the actual owners. It's heirs of somebody, so those are two of them and then, and then one of them is to, uh, one of them should be to Olson who, uh, uh, he was abating, uh, it in the wrong property and so we're supplementing that property and then we abated the other property. That's why I asked you.
Well, the supplement is for us to collect the money, correct?
Yeah.
Right, right.
Okay, so we're collecting from Olson and then we have, uh, two supplements for Noel.
Down the line somewhere. It's for one of his other properties that I had, I had, uh, the wrong map and lot number on it. I had put the map and lot for his house and it wasn't that much for another piece of property.
Oh, okay. Alright, alright, well, uh, I'll entertain the motion to accept these supplements.
So moved.
All in favor? Second, all in favor? Thank you, Jackie. I, I think that's all unless anybody from the public has a question for the assessor. No? Thank you very much for filling in.
Thank you for my-
Bye. It should be one and then one, you have to sign both pages, pages, definitely.
Yes.
Oh, okay, now.
Same thing, but one's in a warrant and one's a certificate.
Okay, so I guess we have to sign both of them.
Both of those.
Okay. I think we need to put this one out. I think we're becoming, we're becoming much more involved with the, since we have the new assessor and the new assessment, we become much more involved with it. So I'm, I'm thinking I must, I must be missing something.
No, not so far. We need the, um-
I did both.
We only have two abatements here and the first page on the Olson one.
Uh-oh.
Which, we look at the original, Shannon, to, uh-
Well, somebody must have that on the second page of the Olson one.
Uh, this is the, this is it, you like it?
Yep.
Coming down the line.
That's one. That must be the one that was in the packet. So am I missing a signature?
You're missing, missing, um-
We had, we saw, I want to see three back pages.
Two.
Two abatements and there should be six pages.
We got all the abatements, but we got two for Noel and two for the-
There's two, there's four Noel papers.
Right, but we're missing the second page on Noel, I think. Nope, this one's over. This is Noel.
And he is the same?
Oh, I have three Noels here.
Yeah, but there's two different supplements to Noel.
Okay, so I'm missing-
So there should be four, four pages.
There's five, hang on.
How about give the whole thing to Suzanne and see if she can figure out what we're missing and we can continue.
They were missing one. I don't know which one we missed.
So we have plenty of copies, so.
Yes, we did.
Oh, yes. So we'd like to figure out what she was missing. Probably the one I didn't sign, anyway. Okay, so we're gonna come out of the assessor's meeting.
Noel and Noel.
We've already voted. And let's open up this select board meeting and we get more, uh, motion to sign the warrants.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor? Warrants.
Maybe we can make a motion that we approve the minutes when you know the number first.
And? We want to have Noel. Okay, and do we have a motion to approve the minutes of October twenty-fifth?
Uh, yes, I, we approve those minutes.
Do we have a second on both of those?
I'll second it.
Okay, so we have two motions, one for each minute and Nancy is seconding both of them.
Yes, yeah.
All in favor? Old business. Suzanne, I meant to ask you, are you gonna be doing the update on the old business?
Since you spoke to the- I spoke to Doug at the animal welfare, um, the other day. He commanded a lengthy conversation. Um, on the dog barking, it's a town ordinance, a state law force. On the part of the condition of the animals, the housing, um, he has a couple of different areas that he could probably get papers from the court for seizure. But he doesn't think he's got enough information, enough documentation, enough proof. I mean, he doesn't want to keep going back to the court requesting seizure of the dogs and it be thrown out, 'cause after a while it becomes problematic.
I have a question for you. Don't we have a dog warrant?
Yes.
Okay.
He gave him fourteen days on his, on his notice for the barking, which comes to tomorrow, is it tomorrow?
Yes, fourteen, I think.
In fourteen days.
Oh, fourteen days.
Yeah.
I think it's tomorrow.
Then the fifteenth, you'd be in the town right away, wouldn't you?
Yeah.
Yes.
Mm-hmm.
And he said he would move that.
Oh, he's, he's here on that one.
And also, I was given information that within the three or four days of last week, he was supposed to have a thirty-foot trailer moved in there. Congratulations, Jackie.
I don't think that's there.
Say what now?
What?
I was told-
I didn't hear that. Go ahead.
I was told-
You were waiting for this meeting to come.
I was told that he had, I was told by Doug in the state that he was informed from the animal issue that, that owner was going to have a trailer moved in there, a thirty-foot trailer in a few days.
In where?
That's a good question, in that location somewhere.
I do notice that they've been doing some more clearing down there, but I mean, it's-
It's not on their property and he's been told.
I don't care who's property.
I know, but, yeah.
It's on that campus more.
Yeah. That's up to the property owner, so.
I know, I think.
Yeah, that's, that's civil.
Is that not the coenforcement officer's job if they place something in, in a property that they don't own?
I don't, I don't think so. I think that's more civil, I mean, I think-
Yeah, I think it was civil too, if the property owner's aware.
Maybe that's why they haven't gone before the planning board.
Yeah.
Well, don't, don't we own sixteen feet, who set out a road? Yeah.
Well, yeah, right now they're in the, right away in the town.
I had it staked off, so they knew exactly where they had.
I see that stick up there, yeah.
But also the sewer guy, or somebody went by and said that they didn't think it was viable, even if it was, it was managed with a, such a building there that you could not, it was not a viable thing for them to be able to afford to pay the town what it would take.
I, I got it.
Or something, somebody said something. That's all hearsay though.
We took about thirty-foot trailer.
Yeah, yeah.
Something about, because he had to have the water, if he wasn't having water, which he doesn't seem to care about. It would be, um, on the other, the pipe's on the other side of the road, so he would have to pay for having all that Ojo on it. It would be, um, that would be he had to do.
Yeah.
We don't have any orders, so we don't have one.
Well, I was gonna say, I, I kinda hate to say this, but until we have some kind of ordinance, we're fighting, uh, uphill that way.
Yeah.
You know?
It's like, we haven't been approached on the law. You don't have to have water control, not the water, not the trailer.
That's why I personally come here, 'cause that's what I would like to suggest at this point.
I, I think the state says you have to be three feet away from another building. I do think that's a state law. But I mean, other than that, they can use-
Coenforcement officer.
Right.
We don't have that, no.
And the spot is creating an ordinance, an ordinance has to be awarded and public hearings have to be made and then it has to go to the town vote. An ordinance has to go to the general legislative body.
No, I understand that.
I'll get that. And we might have to have, you know, a special town meeting for it.
Does everybody realize that that pop-up, I don't think, has any heat or weathering or water? And those animals, and how many, how many chihuahuas do you have to have in there to say it's cruel? Eighteen is enough, maybe thirty-six would be better?
I was two, three a pregnant. According to Doug, he actually looked at all the-
That's the humane system.
Yeah, he does look at all but one of the dogs. He says they look, you know, they're not skinny, they're not like undernourished. He said they didn't look bad.
I know.
Their toenails could be a little long, but not into what he would consider at this point, you know, hurting the animals.
But how many people, you know what a pop-up looks like?
He said that it was clean. It did not smell.
But, but that's not the point. The point is, these animals are, most of the time, the curtains are down. They can't even see out. It's dark in there. There's no heat, no water. I, they're keeping them fed. He said they're, they're his children. But would anybody keep eighteen children in a pop-up? They don't have any space. They never get out.
No, Doug, Doug said that nothing, but everything that happened, he just said.
Did you fill out a form, a complaint form? We're, 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 we've got six official form complaints forms. So we're, we're building a, a case for the two officers, the animal patrol officer and the one from Martin of Agriculture who does humane, humane animal treatment. They need documentation. It, it's just, it's like when you try, you have, you rent to someone and they don't pay the rent. They don't leave. They take six months to have a rent, but still, nothing happens overnight, no matter how much it makes sense. So you should fill something out and sign it and, and add it to the other people's.
Yes.
And you might include the noise, because-
That barking goes on.
Yes, well, everybody's door's blocked. I don't, I don't think you can really say that.
Well, if you live right next door, I have a feeling that people that are living right next door.
They all can't really stop it.
I never hear the part, 'cause I think what happens is he keeps them closed up and they can't see out.
Yeah.
Which is so cruel. You're talking about space, that law, eighteen in there, three are pregnant, so there'll be more puppies that they survive. And there's no heat. Do you imagine that, all being around?
We can imagine they'll be here when it's cold, so.
I, I asked Doug about that, you know, I've had a chihuahua, they're small, they need heat, they don't have good body heat. And he said, at this point, there's still nothing he can do. I said, what about when it becomes colder?
Really cold today.
And he says that he doesn't have anything that will stick in a code of law.
And so when I, basically, I called the attorney general today and I talked to, I talked to-
What'd they say?
I talked to them. I talked to the sub-dog, I talked to the general. And, um, Jason, they're waiting for information, but then I talked to the other, the state, um, you know, the animal welfare. And he says-
Doug, you talked about-
They, he can't enough documentation. So it's like, hell, it's, what kind of documentation do you have when one dog dies?
That's why we're asking you to fill form out and describe what you're saying verbally and writing, so we can give it to them.
Can we submit it here?
Yes, and we can, you can do it. Suzanne, can we get them, the forms?
Yes, Doug, who'd you say?
Yeah, but the group that was here the first time, we, six people signed, signed the things.
But that was mostly asking, you're addressing humane, which is good. We need that. We need what you're saying.
No, because barking doesn't count. The, the police told us, Bob, they barked for years and they couldn't stop them from barking. I don't, I don't put barking in there because-
That's what we need you to write down, how you feel with their content.
But I never really barked that late unless somebody comes in. Like right now, I don't think they're in there. You go by there and they have, um, a cement block on the stair, so the dogs, they push the door out, but they're not in there. They're going to just sitting there freezing by themselves.
They're outside?
I don't think, yeah, I don't know. They might have a different, a different place that they're staying, I don't know. Last night they were walking down the street very late at night.
Yeah, very late, I mean, so they're in a warm place.
I was told that one time, you got, after you have, I think it was five dogs. You actually have to have a license.
You have to have a kennel license, right?
Correct.
That's true.
If you're breeding, if you're all-
You don't have a-
Or a kennel, a kennel license.
We have no ordinances here that cover that. If you go on, let's say, uh, Esports website, you can find a whole slew of very, very specific rules about, uh, you know, dogs barking and-
We have the, we have the ordinance that says that and it's specific rules.
But when you, when you don't have an ordinance, you, you go back to the state rules.
But we need, we have the ordinance.
But then, then who, who actually goes and does something about it? It just feels like, we're asking the state to come in. But I'm, you know, I would like to ask you guys to do something about it. Come in and say, hey, this is a nuisance. We can't have this. What can you guys plan to deal with that? You know, I mean, you have a lawyer.
We're asking you, but we have one that says, uh, we have a-
We have, I mean, from what you're saying.
No, you have a lawyer. We have an ordinance and our, our toenforcement guy is working on correcting some of the language in it, because it was a little too nebulous. So he did come in and corrected it for us. Hopefully we'll get a, a good, fresh copy soon.
So, uh, yeah. In response to what you're saying, I mean, there's a limit to what the town can do, 'cause he has rights.
And he, and he changed-
And he's not in violation of our parking ordinance yet. Um, the barking dog complaint is our town ordinance, which is, barking dog is kind of vague. That's why we ask people to sign complaints, 'cause we need documentation that there's more than one time, that the dog barked after ten o'clock, or, you know, whatever the wording is in the ordinance. And we can't just nuisance them and make them leave. It's like, we can't do that. We have to go through the proper channels. And that's the ASPCA for potential cruelty to animals. They've been out three or four kinds now, um, ideally.
They don't think it's cool to have that many dogs and it's all, they-
Well, there's criteria they have to meet. They don't get to decide what they think is cool. What, what the law says is cool and is he violating that? And I would imagine-
He's already been out there twice.
Right, and the temperature's not there yet for when they came out. The animals look healthy enough. There's no feces around, like, there's, there's, he doesn't get to make a decision. He's gotta follow a law.
I know, I've been there.
Right, you know what I mean? So it's a process and we're working on it and that's the best-
It's the owner of the property that has to actually, let's say, approach the police or whatever, to get happy and move.
Correct, but that's, from what I understand, that property is like a, an estate. It's all- Well, no.
It's an airship.
It's an airship, so he is technically as right as to be in there, you know?
Yes, he's, that's his, his father owns that property.
Right, he's part of the heirs. He's an heir. Yeah, he's one of the brothers, you know?
And he's still on Doug's radar. Doug claims I'm coming back in January for the dogs, five of the dogs have appointments to have ravy shots. Um, he, he will be making visits between now and then. And he is on, gonna be checking with him after the January appointment.
And what about the number of dogs, so to make sure that he's licensed to, 'cause you're supposed to have proper facilities for your dog, for your kennel.
Well, that, that's something that our animal patrol officers, that's after sixty days, they have to have a kennel license. And there does, there is a checklist. And I don't think he will, he will not meet the checklist.
It's like sixty days from now, we're all-
First arrived, when he first arrived, so it's like maybe forty days, forty days.
And basically, not one of us can change the rules. We, we can bring it to you folks, citizens, to vote.
To vote on a new ordinance.
Yes, yes, we can't change an ordinance. The animal patrol officer can. We can propose it, put it up for you folks to vote on.
We have too many who are there. One at a time.
So, so, yeah, you folks are the ones that have to approve the ordinances. Anything that we propose has to go to the town.
Which is, yeah, I totally agree with you. I think it's very important. And in fact, it would be really good if we maybe had some meetings with town people who are interested in discussing, you know, this issue, so to speak, to kind of maybe try to get the scary parts out of it, you know?
Well, I think this, I think this is-
What are we adding at the end now?
Right, but ordinances are a conversation that is happening in the planning board, testing the economic development that's happening.
These citizens, we're not hearing about that.
Right, well-
So, so that's why I'm open to this meeting and saying, I'd like to see something.
That's cookie rep, cookie rep. You got, those meetings are open to the public and, and those conversations-
But they need participate as members of the town, you know, there are meetings, you know, that may be provided for us to do such a thing. We have an agenda that lists the, you know, ordinances that we think are pertinent and most, let's say, timely right now, which would be, for instance, living in a camper.
I think that come this following summer, when we have our town meeting, there will be lots of ordinances up the brats.
And I'll be real honest, when you cook, a lot of these meetings aren't advertised well.
Well, everyone lives on the town website calendar. Everyone.
Yeah, but not everybody looks on the-
Also, people are not very aware of what the subject matter is or are not, let's say, used to looking it up and saying, well, what's on the agenda for this meeting?
Right.
You know, kind of thing. Whereas if you have something that's posted that says, we're discussing, you know, the taxes, or we're discussing abatements, you know? Come and join us, you know?
Well, our agenda is, is always out there.
I'm just saying, I think sometimes if, if you want more participation, there's ways of doing that. I'm just saying, wouldn't that be a different approach that could be thought of?
When you have, when I come to meetings, unless it's something that's pertinent to me, I get here and, um, if you don't have paperwork in front of you, you haven't read it, you don't have a clue what you guys are talking about, which I don't, 'cause I can't hear that well, but.
Well, there's the agenda right over there on the table. When you walk in, you can get the agenda. And then whatever, after each, um, at least since I've been here, it's whenever we have a subject, we always open up a public comment, even though the previous board never let anybody speak until the end of the meeting. I thought that, I think that's fruitless, because if you're having a discussion on this dog issue, and you can't say anything till the end of the meeting, what could be bad? So that's why we're still at this one thing, you know?
And they're also on the-
Old business dogs. That's what we're talking about now.
And this topic of the dogs has been all over town. You can talk to anybody.
No, I get it.
When I mentioned eighteen chihuahuas in a pop-up tent, the first comment I got was, that sounds like a garage band.
So that's the ordinance we have standing now, okay.
And the forms that we can fill, fill out or whatever, that's right there, right?
And the girls, they usually post the agenda right on the counter.
Yeah, you can also see it on the website.
Yeah, they usually have it right on the counter, too.
I get, I get all that, you know, it's just that not everybody is perhaps-
Well, we also have the Facebook.
Some of us are busy, too.
If I could make one observation, following up on Jason's comment. Recently, the agenda has only appeared on the website at the last moment.
Yeah.
And prior to go, go back a ways, there were always a weekly hit. And if there was some way to get back to that schedule, it would help in this situation.
Like, can't I just set a cutoff date and as of this date, nothing goes on it? As of a certain day of the week, nothing else can be added to it.
That's what we're working on.
Yeah. Instead of waiting until the last minute to get it.
No, I, we-
Now, that's gonna interfere with Jackie, 'cause she doesn't give me her papers till Friday and I can't post it.
So go to the next meeting. There's nothing to say that she can't give it to you on a Friday and it doesn't come before us for two and a half weeks.
So I, I thought the Friday before the meeting is when the agenda is done. The Friday before the meeting.
And that's not a week.
But it's a Friday before the meeting. So the meeting's on a Wednesday, so on Friday, we post the agenda. We don't change it unless we have important add-ons that we have to put on.
It didn't go on today until afternoon time.
Well, we had some people out in the training and, and, but thanks for that. I mean, we're all learning. We did have a town administrator leave with ten days' notice. We're working on it.
So you go back to the ordinance issue. How does one as, as a citizen, uh, make, you know, a move to be able to suggest or push- So, you go back to the ordinance issue, how does one as, as a citizen, uh, make, you know, a, a move to be able to suggest or push forward ideas about ordinances?
So, I think that.
I mean, who can go to?
Here, because you're doing one, you're doing the right thing, because there's only two ways to get something on.
Right here. But then how, how. How does it become, let's say, the next step, which is we make a list of, let's say.
I'd like to have Kevin come back in and he can, he started drafting a number of amendments to the ordinances taken from a lot of surrounding towns that he works with already.
Okay, this is regards to dogs, right?
Yep.
Well, he's also code enforcement, I mean, I work in the meeting.
I, 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 I know that, you know, the economic developers, the comprehensive plan and the planning board have had, well, there's people that sit on all those committees. And there are already, like, the beginning of an identified list of, like, if we were gonna try to move some ordinances forward in the next year, what would they be? So, I heard for the gray line, that we're gonna try to do stuff that we don't need to vote on, and I mean, a lot of.
None of that, no, everything.
Everything has to be voted on.
This is the problem, this is the problem.
Right, but so people come.
You get all sorts of information and misinformation.
But the reality is that, if the meetings are posted, the agendas, you can come and be involved in any of the conversation, and in those three meetings, I know they're discussing ordinances and I suspect that.
Yeah.
Within the next few months, they'll be, the, the fear is you can't bring two in, because a lot of people in town are for ordinances and a lot of people are not. You know what I mean, so like, we wanna prioritize and bring forward what might, might be the start of something that we can successfully get past, you know, so I mean, it's not.
We'll have to go in three meetings to find out what ordinances are gonna be on the document.
Well, what they'll do is the, the committees will bring it to us.
Right.
Then we have to prove it to put it on, to be opposed to vote.
I think the most informative.
We need to go to a committee to be able to suggest to them what.
Well, you can suggest to us.
Oh, I can.
Well, you can, you can suggest to us, but ordinances you think are important.
And then, and so apparently we go back to a committee to be written.
Right, yeah, but I suspect your, your priority ordinances would probably be the ones, same ones that are identified by some of the people on these committees, you know?
Yes.
But like, in order to accomplish that, well, we have to establish zoning, and then, you know, we have to establish a couple of specific ordinances around the concerns that are related in those zones. And that's, that's the process that is in discussion, but it's not, it's not a quick and easy one, because, you know.
So, Nancy, what, what, she had only time for one committee.
I go to the planning board.
Planning board.
I'm silly, you're running down. I go to the planning board, I go to the planning board, because they are, you know, the economic development is.
I tried to find those meetings, but I never found them.
Well, it's. And, and, and we, well, and we were working to change the times on it, the next one is, um, five o'clock, not this Monday, the next one, I think, it's on the calendar, it's on the website, if you go to the town.
I do, I do on the town.
It's on there, it's on there, you know?
And, and again.
The planning board on there as well.
Some of us, some of us are busy, and, and it's hard to make all these meetings at five o'clock or four o'clock or, you know, some folks work and that's understandable. They might wanna think about doing them a little later in the evenings, so working folks can attend.
Well, I think that we also have to keep in mind that everybody that's on these committees are volunteers, and, you know, you work the committees around what is times that work for you people on the committees.
I don't have any problems with that, I'm, I'm not, I'm not making any.
You know, so I'm just saying that, you know, and, yeah. I think we've done, um, as much as we can, and you can always call the town office anytime and they'll look up any meeting for you and tell you when the next one is, if you can't, it's on the website. It sounds like you can, so you're, they're all open to the public, every meeting is open to the public and every town meeting is here in this room, although they try to have them, they're all, all, all town committee meetings are.
Special community. No, it's just town meetings.
All committee.
Special, special town meetings are here, the big.
Well, wait, wait, I was just talking about.
All committee meetings.
All town business is conducted either here in the town office.
I have one question, I heard that there was a committee for, this sounds so funny, adult recreation, sounds like.
That might be part of the L C O C.
Well, that's somebody, uh, somebody told me about this committee.
The Lubbock community outreach committee, the Lubbock community outreach program, they do have adult education programs and they may have a committee meeting, but it's not part of ours.
Okay, yeah, because it's not on the town, it's not on the town.
I mean, it's not that we don't.
Adult recreation? Yes, adult recreation.
I haven't heard of that.
Yes, they have classes.
I'm running the right straight. No, 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 I'm saying I haven't heard that there's a committee for adult recreation.
There is, they're discussing, and again, I got nowhere discussing with the person who mentioned it, and I said, oh, that's interesting, because we have a whole bunch of people that are playing pickleball, or trying to play pickleball, you would think that we would maybe be part of it, you know?
Yeah.
Uh, but they said, oh, no, 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 we'll get back to you on that.
Well, it's not an official town committee.
No.
Anyway, she wants to start one.
Yeah.
No, don't want.
Anybody who's too involved gets on a committee.
We have committees for committees here.
And we try not to, we don't really want committees for committees, do we, Jason, but we need it.
No.
We try not to.
I may have had a committee.
I know, I am too, I really don't like committees, I don't think we got. Okay, are we done? Oh, well, maybe you're a committee. But you haven't, we haven't found that out yet.
Oh, no, it will happen.
Okay, so have we answered enough of your questions, Cookie?
Yes, thank you so much.
Okay, Suzanne, do you wanna get, update us on Nick the Computer Guy, or is he here?
Actually, Nick's right here.
He is.
I will tell you, hit it on.
Hi, Nick.
I will tell you, hit it on, because we had a computer crash in the town office last week and it just wiped, it wiped everything out and put everything behind.
Really bad, yeah.
Um, and he, where the god sent and had it up and running in like two, two and a half days, but the rest of the computers are looking very, uh, scary. They're not old, it's just a hard drive, but he's, he's the expert to explain it all.
All right, well, I'm Nick Landrum, I'm the owner of the Computer Guy, which is kind of interesting, I'm not the only guy, um, I have two full-time technicians, two part-time technicians as well, a paid office manager.
Wow, that's excellent.
I'm thirty-eight years old, five kids, and, uh.
Wow. Very cool.
So, um, despite my, uh, my parents, I still look like a nine, I'm in high school, but, uh, definitely been doing this most of my life. Lubbock Town Office has been a customer of ours for many, many years, we service nineteen town offices, roughly about two hundred fifty businesses as well, um, a couple thousand residential businesses. And, um, we, we range from anything from, from, uh, working with Trio to working with IBM, with Dell, Apple, and the like. So, if you, if you look there, there is a proposal there, um, specifically about a maintenance program or, and/or, a call support kind of plan. Um, most town offices do at least the monthly maintenance, just to kind of let you know, and monthly maintenance basically comprises, uh, us remoting into the computer every single month. And we double check things, we make sure that the health of the hard drive, which is the device that has all the data and the software and everything, we monitor the health of said hardware. As well, we do deep scans, make sure that everything's clean and make sure that there's no remote access tools that are part of threat actors, and, and we also check the integrity of backups.
I was gonna say, we do backups, or you make sure the backups are done.
Yes, ma'am, which is, um, interesting situation, we had a town office, um, to, to sign this contract, and they're like, yep, yep, our backups should be all good. So, we remoted in for the first time, we checked it and hadn't been backed up in three months. And we actually, um, found a similar situation.
Yes.
But we're already here.
Yeah, so, um, so with all of that, we, we like to call this peace of mind plan, um, it's one less thing for you to worry about, and that's, that's our job, and that's what you pay us for. Um, the other portion that, that is offered is call support, and yes, it is unlimited, you can call us every single day, five days out of the week, from nine A M. to five P M., excluding national holidays. And we will be able to assist you either remotely or on-site, and we will address all of those needs accordingly.
And I did further investment, ask him, okay, I have an issue where they can't find a file or something's not, you know, finding the right shortcut or something, does that qualify? He said, yes, if you have struggles like word and you can't get it to work right, would that qualify? And he said, yes, so it's kind of like, sounds awful, baby feeding us I T.
So, how, how long you been in business?
Eight years.
And how many municipal contracts do you?
Contracts?
Or, yeah.
Well, we've been working with nineteen town offices, uh, for a while, but as far as contracts, I would probably say, uh, a good third of them have contracted us.
And you were a teacher before, right?
I was.
Huh, I don't remember that.
Yeah, I was in, at Tech Three at Washington Camden as well, um, I worked with Elm Street Elementary School.
Well.
So, Suzanne, which, which one do you, uh, which one do you need?
We actually need both of them, because, I mean, he just had a computer hard drive replaced and I know it was four hundred dollars, just for that, that didn't count all the time that was put into it before, trying to figure out why our printers weren't working, why the computer kept saying.
Why we couldn't find the minutes or anything.